Good evening. I would like to call the Committee of the Whole, the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for September 5th, 2018, to order. At this time, you know, we've had in the last couple of weeks, a lot of our citizens who've gotten together on our youth summit. Some, we did a presentation last week. Over 650 people participated in listening and talking sessions. We had a group of professionals together. We still have work to be done, but it's the group from the Center for Juvenile Justice Planning who've come to the community have said, "We've never been in a community that has this many people are focused on being part of a solution." So with that, I think it's important that we understand that we want to do what's right, not just for the dealing with the kids that are causing the most of the issues, but also all kids in our community. So with that positive approach to dealing with all of our young people, let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Matson, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I plead allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Matson. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Matson.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clul.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you, Jackie. Again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our city council, I would again like to welcome all those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk with the council, you are also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you are participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we will ask that you turn off or silence your cell phones and other electronic handheld devices as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chamber. Since this is a Committee of the Whole meeting, if you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under Public with Business, which will occur towards the end of the meeting, which, and when addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. You know, it's, as we move forward, this be mindful that for 182 years, your city council in Davenport has been meeting. There's a legacy of that. There is a certain sense of decorum, as I've outlined, and I think it's important that we understand how this community has grown through that common respect and dignity that we provide. So thank you all again for being here. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you very much. We're going to move, we have two public hearings this evening, and again, as a point, public hearings are the ones that bring things to everyone's attention. We will, I'll discuss these again in the meeting agenda, as part of the meeting agenda, but we have three items under public hearings this evening, and Alderman Ambrose will lead that, those public hearings.
Thank you, your honor. I open the first public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Fourth and Leclerc Street sewer separation project funded at $387,730.20. Anybody wishing to address this, please come forward. Hearing didn't see no one, your honor, I move to close this public hearing.
Two seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The second public hearing is on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West 16th Street resurfacing project. Anybody from the public?
Yes, my name is Joe Charlton. I live on West 15th Street. They kept putting 15th Street off the head. They always wanted to resurface 16th, and 15th Street is really getting bad. I've seen cars swerve potholes down there. You know, I just want to know how much they're paying, going to pay for a resurface instead of resurfacing 16th Street. We've got school buses and everything coming down. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your opinion. We have 15th on the list. All in favor? Or motion to, do I have a motion? Close the public hearing? Close the hearing?
I move to close public hearing.
Second? All in favor? Opposed? And number three is a public hearing on the proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the pump station 203 generator and controls project. Anybody from the public? Hearing didn't see no one, your honor, I move to close, come on. Come on up. We've been talking about this pump station for quite some time now. Please state your name and address.
Thank you, ladies, gentlemen. I am David DeBar at 3002 East 18th Street here in Davenport, corner of 18th and Marlow, which is the site of the lift station that's been talked about considerably. Residents are here not to criticize, but in fact, wanting to review the planning with you in the hope of mutual resolve. A letter dated August 19, 2018, to Nicole Gleason and to other members took place, and in this letter, the residents cited the problems that need for acceptable financial involvement to resolve this issue in a permanent fashion. Allowing infiltration of stormwater into the sewage line with the possibility of stormwater and raw sewage leaking into the ground, could we be faced with the creation of a sinkhole? Now, the letter that we sent to Nicole Gleason, she returned her response, and in her response, she indicates very openly, while a gravity sewer is the preferred solution, she goes on to say it's cost prohibitive at this point. The letter that we sent, and I don't know whether you all received a copy of it or not. If not, I'd be happy to read it out to you, and, anyway, the letter to Nicole Gleason reads as follows. In reference to the Marlow 18th Street Lift Station, stormwater is getting into the sewer line. Can this problem be located and fixed? And I'm happy to state that in her letter, she stated there would be smoke tests taking place, I believe it was on the September that it in fact is scheduled for September 6th and 7th, weather permitting. Now, the letter that went to her states as follows. I had mentioned the stormwater getting into the sewer line. The proof is that a pump is brought out when other than normal rainfall is anticipated. Possible effect of the generator and proposed unnecessary taxpayers' expense, noise, vibration, cracking of home interiors, reduction of property values, and possible insurance rate increases. If truly proven to be necessary, would the city be willing to install a generator and control panel on the city property at Duck Creek Park? The city ordinance questions other than limited structures on rights of ways. Instead of a temporary fix with the lift station, have the sewer line lowered for the two blocks south, creating a gravity flow permanent fix? The resolve, as we see it, it keeps, the, the smoke deals will keep the stormwater of the sewer once that part, of course, is repaired. A grant or increase in the budget for gravity flow would be a permanent fix, not a Band-Aid as presently proposed. Gravity flow would eliminate, A, workers' need to get into the sewer, B, no need for control board and generator, C, no need for electric power, D, no need to send out and maintain emergency pump, and E, no need for lift station motors. So I think it was taken into consideration all the costs that are ongoing now for generator, for manpower, for pumps, for electricity. If, if this board could find a way in cooperation with the sewer department, whatever, to, to take care of this particular problem, I think you could recognize considerable savings for many, many years to come by a gravity flow thing. If it doesn't come about, well then, these costs are going to continue to the city and the taxpayers, so we heavily wish you would consider our suggestion here. And as I mentioned from the start, we aren't here to complain. In fact, Davenport's doing a traffic job on their roads and, and many other things. The only thing that we're asking is better information, maybe working a little closer with you and the sewer department to try and resolve this problem, save money by a permanent fix. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll see where we go from there. I thank you very much for the opportunity.
Oh, all right. Thank you. All great points. Anybody else? Motion to close this public hearing?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, your honor. Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. And again, these items, we've opened this on a public hearing, they are on our agenda later on in the, in the evening. Their next item, there are no public, no presentations for tonight's meeting. Are there any petitions or communications from council members? And I know Alderman Dickman, as our community engagement chair, will start off the discussion. Thank you, Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, your honor. Wanted to start out making an announcement about an event we've got coming up at Nahand Marsh. On September 15th, there will be a monarch release party, a little bit of a theme here with my announcements, but that will be from 10:00 to 12:30. Lots of fun activities, good for the planet, good to bring your kids to, get out of the house, and then also let everyone know that September 13th at 6:00 PM at Truman Elementary, I will be having my ward meeting, and our new parks director will be there to discuss all things parks, so hopefully you can come by. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman Matson?
Thank you, your honor. Your honor and colleagues, in reference to the civil rights ordinance that's been tabled, in reference to the email and stuff that we just got a few hours ago, I want to say I appreciate one of my council members to my left, from the third ward, sincere efforts and conversations and trying to work together. But in lieu of this recent development, I'm asking that we have a, either a special council meeting, or a work session, or something, because this is a request to put a resolution on the agenda for a vote next week that significantly changes what we've been telling the public. I think this is a big issue. We all need to talk about it, just not a few of us behind closed doors. I just found out about it, and we all need to be together and talk about this and, and be open to the public. So I will make, when it's for motions and ordinances later on in the, in the meeting, I will call for, or ask for, whatever people want to do, a special meeting, a work session tomorrow, Friday, because the agenda gets set Monday, or stuff goes on, and I will state again that I think we should get rid of this ordinance, delete it, put it to bed, get it away, and then continue your conversations, but this doesn't do that. So I think we need a serious conversation with all of us in the public before we allow this resolution to go on the agenda. Thank you, your honor, and I'll wave to my time at the end.
Thank you. Alderman McGinnis?
Thank you, your honor. Just want to let everybody know that the September 3rd ward meeting will be at the historic Leclerc House at 6:30 East 7th Street on Sunday, September 9th. Rich Oswald will be our very, very special guest. He is our neighborhood services manager who has been on the job for over a year and is doing some terrific things in terms of nuisance abatement. In our Tuesday meeting of the council, the management update meeting, we discussed some things that have come up at ward meetings in the past, and this is looking at our rental ordinances, looking how we deal with vacant and abandoned properties, and how we deal with nuisance properties, which I know is an issue for many people living in the city. We, it looks like the council is about ready to come forward with perhaps some new parts of that ordinance, and so hopefully Rich will be able to spend some time on Sunday talking about that as well. It's exciting to be able to move this forward and continue this conversation. So anybody can join us, it is, it is a third ward meeting, but you're all honorable, honorary third ward members on September 9th, Leclerc House, 6:30 East 7th Street at 2:00 PM. Hope you can join us.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Anyone else? Seeing no one else at this time. We're going to move on to action items for discussion. Again, these are items, many of which you will hear a first, second, or third consideration. If it's a first consideration that's brought up tonight, it'll be again, will be discussed this evening and be discussed again next week. There are basically three sections of those two-week periods, so you'll hear various first, second, and third considerations throughout this, the items for discussion. Our first area to be discussed is community development. Alderman Gripp will lead the discussion, and Alderman Clul will set the agenda.
Thank you, your honor. I open the meeting for community development this evening. The first item on the agenda is a third consideration, ordinance for case number REZ-18-09 being the request of Jared Engler on behalf of McCarthy Improvement Company for the rezoning of 1.5 acres, more or less, located at the northeast corner of Utica Ridge Road and East 56th Street, from CO Office Shop District to C1 Neighborhood Shopping District to facilitate commercial development. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Dick Moore. I live at 4222 East 58th Street. Well, soon you're going to be deciding whether to sustain or not the CO zoning for that green space that borders Utica Ridge Road between 56th and 58th Streets. I suspect you'll be happy to get that one off the agenda, as are we. You may well have bigger fish to fry, but please understand that those of us who reside in the Villas of Crow Valley take this matter very seriously, not only because of the request that's before us tonight, but also because of others that may follow if we change that zoning. Our development is one of three beautiful places that exist in that part of Davenport. Across Utica Ridge Road is the Lake Hurst addition, and just a couple of blocks north is Crow Valley Estates. I think all would, three of those would probably qualify as upscale neighborhoods, maybe some a little more upscale than others, and they contribute considerably to the city's taxable income base. They need to be protected. The green space that I speak of has been for sale for many years, and as one of those who lives in the Villas, we were sure that eventually that property would, would be developed. Interestingly enough, though, the request to rezone didn't come until the very last villa was built and sold, perhaps just coincidentally. Well, now comes a buyer who wishes to erect a building there, which would house a salon in one portion of that building. We have no problem with that. She's well within her rights to build that building and, and to house it, as long as she retains the, the CO zoning. Unfortunately, that same person would like to include two other retail stores in the same building, which would require the zoning to be changed to C1, and that's where the rub comes in. A large majority of my neighbors join me in opposing those two proposed businesses. We don't believe that they will comport with the beauty, the tranquility, or the history of those neighborhoods. And by the way, the Planning and Zoning Committee agrees with us, as you know, having rejected the petitioner's request. In summary, it seems to me that this dispute is in some ways much ado about nothing. If someone wants to build on this property, that's fine. All they need to do is ensure that it comports with the existing zoning regulation. If it doesn't, or they think it might not in the future, then I think probably they should find another place to build. In my mind, it's really that simple, and therefore, what we are asking is that you do the right thing and vote with the people on this issue. We think it's a very reasonable request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else with public comment? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Good evening. I am Janet Van Erre, and I live at 5912 Crow Valley Park Drive, 6th Ward. About five years ago, I purchased my condo, newly constructed, and when the developer was addressing the zoning, he informed me that it would be difficult to change the zoning from CO to anything else, or that it won't, he wouldn't believe that it would happen at all. So that was a major concern of mine when I bought the property, because over the berm out my back door is the large farm field that's yet to be developed. So I just feel like if you let them get one toe in the door, that there's no telling what might change over there, and I just, I just don't want to see any busyness, any, I don't know, just deterioration of the beauty of the area. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? State your name and address or ward, please.
Good evening. Connie Jones, resident of the Villas of Crow Valley in the 6th Ward. Mr. Mayor, council members, citizens. First of all, I want to say thank you for the dialogue from the last council meeting. I thought some of the things were helpful. Based on that, I prepared a decision criteria matrix, which you should have as a handout. I know this is a lot for you to look at in compressed time. I don't intend to cover all of it. I would like to focus on items four and five. So let's start with item four, which involves the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinances. So my look at the comprehensive plan, in my short time of being involved with this, says that we're in a residential general area that's mostly residential with neighborhood compatible commercial services. Higher intensity, I understand, is, can be considered at the edges. So I'm trying to wrestle with, is this an either-or question, or should those two things, the higher intensity and the neighborhood compatible, be at odds with each other? I don't think so. I looked at the current zoning for the higher intensity of C1. That reads, and I'm paraphrasing, establishment should be compatible with the character of the surrounding area. So how about another perspective? I also looked at the materials available for public review on the zoning ordinance rewrite. The area that we're speaking of would be in a designation called Commercial Transitional, and I've told some of the members of the staff, I really like this uses matrix table. The average person who doesn't deal with zoning, this is crystal clear. But in that, this is another perspective, I know this isn't law yet, and this is being developed with some consultants. When you look down through Commercial Transitional, one of, or two of the uses that are troubling myself and a lot of the neighbors are bars and restaurants, and those would not be permitted under Commercial Transitional. Moving to number five, the use is suitable given the adjacent zoning. We've had a lot of conversation about that. So I'd ask that you turn to the second page of your handout, which is a map, and if you can orient yourself there to where this Lot 1 is at, at the corner there of Utica Ridge and East 56th, been a lot of discussion about, well, you're, you're sitting right across from a big C2 complex, and we are, but for the people who can't see this map, if you would, I would like to tell them what I see here. I see a huge concentration of financial institutions. Wells Fargo, US Bank, Quad City Bank and Trust, Century Insurance, Morgan Stanley, Merrill Lynch, and Devoy and Touche. Secondly, a huge concentration of medical facilities. Mississippi Valley Blood Bank, Genesis, ORA Orthopedics, Neurology Consultants, QC Pediatrics, and a whole host of other smaller ones that I didn't even label. And right in the middle, University of Iowa has an office. So to me, the salient points here are, most of these professional businesses are closed by 6 o'clock at night. One of my neighbors just talked about the neighborhoods and the character of those to the north. And further, if you look on the Utica Ridge corridor there, I don't see bars and restaurants, I see banks. So then also, why do we keep asking about the plan for the undeveloped lots, which we're here to talk about Lot 1? Well, it's been brought up that, you know, this could be a question of fear in our minds of the unknown. Well, I don't think so. I think this is wisdom of five to eight decades of life experiences speaking. Given the data that's shown in number six, these issues have not been resolved for the majority of the neighborhood. Without the middle column that you have there on the decision criteria that I put together completed, I don't know how to have a constructive conversation to find a solution, because I still can't answer the fundamental question, and that is uses. So as you formulate your decision on this matter, I can only ask you to maintain an unbiased lens, review the data, or the lack of data, I think there's some things missing, and consider the totality of the decision criteria. These are just my suggestions, and many of you offered these last time, so hopefully we can find harmony between commerce and the residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? State your name and address or ward, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Joy Willis. I live at 4261 East 58th Street in the 6th Ward. My husband and I are against the rezoning of the property boarding 56th and Utica Ridge for all the reasons that have been already previously expressed. We would like to add that we feel the city council planning and zoning committee studied this proposal, they evaluated this proposal, and they rejected this proposal, and we hope that you would do the same. Thank you.
State your name and address or ward, please.
Yes, my name is John Mau. I live in the 6th Ward. Good evening, Mayor and councilmen. Thanks for this opportunity. I'd like to present two contrasting and highly probable scenarios. The first, the council approves the request to rezone the one-plus acres from C0 to C1. Ms. Philam can build her building for pure and her additional tenants, quite probably retail, or restaurant, or a bar. But this would simply be a foot-in-the-door for rezoning requests. Within a couple of months, or maybe a year, this council would be dealing with the request to rezone the remaining six-plus acres from C0 to C1. from C0 to C1. That would be consistent with the petitioner's original intent when the first rezoning request was made. One would be hard-pressed to make a cogent argument against rezoning the remaining 6-plus acres at that time. After all, it would be adjacent to that which has already been C1. A denial, in fact, would indeed suggest spot zoning. More frightening still, the restrictions that were placed on the original zoning request would be buried deep in the files and probably deeper in our memories. So the restrictions would no longer be part of the new request. I can understand the petitioner's desire to make the change. It is a good business decision. It expands the market list of eligible establishments. But the expansion from C0 to C1 allows for exactly those which we are most concerned. And if he suggests, if, as he suggests, he would not burden us with neighbors that would retract from our neighborhood, why make the rezoning request in the first place? So the zoning, rezoning is approved, and our greatest concerns are realized. The door would be open for restaurants, bars, gas stations, and fast food chains. Our quiet and peaceful neighborhood would be transformed with bright lights and noise in the evenings and on weekends, or refuse paper cups and napkins blow across our streets and our backyards. The second scenario, the council denies the rezoning request from C0 to C1. Ms. Spillam can build a building to house her salon, and we would welcome her as a neighbor. The salon fits nicely into C0. And she can include space for additional tenants. Some examples of such future tenants would fit, that would fit, are her present neighbors right now, financial services, endodontics, a pain clinic. She just can't have her restaurant and bar. Future developments in the rest of the 6-plus acres, still zone C0, would have similar business establishments, professional offices of various kinds. It would be a perfect spot for the kind of establishment that Connie Jones spoke of two weeks ago regarding the Research Triangle in North Carolina. Probably on a smaller scale, but high-tech stuff, professional services that we may, may not yet imagine. Such offices and the salon would make for good neighbors. Those doors would close at 5:00 and leave us with our quiet and peaceful neighborhood for the evenings and the weekends. The quiet and peaceful neighborhood we had assumed we would keep when we purchased the homes. What I would like to ask you is to ask the developer to simply be a bit more patient. If he still stays with C0, those businesses will come. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? State your name and address or ward, please.
Hi there. My name is Stacy Spillam. I'm the owner of Pure Hair Studio residing at 5515 Utica Ridge Road. Thank you. And first off, just thank you so much for the support this far that you've given my husband and I on this development. It's been a lot of long Wednesday nights, but it's been a very humbling experience. I've heard about a lot of really great projects, and enormous projects with millions of dollars attached to them. Really big developers with really big visions. I am proud that the city is excited to bring in the big wigs and keep this town moving forward, and that you guys are doing some great things. But I'm also amazed at the support you have given my small business and my small dream. My dream just to have a beautiful, small development in one of Davenport's thriving corridors. My dream to give other small businesses a place to start their small business, just as I had started six years ago. Davenport is where small businesses can thrive. So retail, retail is a hard area of business right now. Retail is the malls, the clothing stores, you know. Those stores are struggling to get walk-in traffic because online business is booming, I'm sure you all know. I, on the other hand, am thriving, thankfully, during this crazy world of online. Because you can't get your hair done online. You just can't. It's a fact. So retailers have caught on to this. Nationwide, larger retailers such as Saks Fifth Avenue are putting lots of investments into creating large salons and spas into their department stores to capitalize on the guaranteed walk-in traffic that salons have. I walked out of my salon at 5:15 tonight, and we had already seen 55 customers today out of just a small 1,600-square-foot building. So C1 is where salons need to be. C1 businesses want to be next to salons. Retail and salons go hand in hand. Your city code may not partner us with C1, but the market, the customers, the potential tenants, they do. So as a smart, responsible owners of an 8,000-square-foot building, we have a drive to be successful in the city of Davenport. So with that, C1 on the edge of a PDD and a C2 zoning districts on one of Davenport's most thriving major arteries is a dream come true for us and an amazing use of vacant land for the city of Davenport. We are 8,000 square feet. It's small. We will occupy 4,200 square feet of this building. Our potential tenants are 2,000 square feet and 1,800 square feet. There's no option for these large, high-traffic people. There's no option for loud, busy bars. There just simply isn't. It's a small building, making a small impact in this area. As a hairstylist and a salon owner, my goal daily is to make people happy. It's a daunting task most days when you are working predominantly with women, for women. Upsetting anyone goes against every bit of effort that I have daily. So nothing makes me happier to be creating a development that has little to no effect on anyone. We're 600 feet away from any neighbors. We need no help from anybody. No stoplights, no traffic studies, no new turn lanes, and a 0% protest rate. We currently have no signed tenants. We don't have a big bar that wants to come in. We don't, we don't have any signed tenants, again. A statement that my big bar or restaurant will be coming in, it's just simply not true. So my husband and I are so appreciative for this experience with you all. And I look forward to our investment to continue in Davenport and becoming great neighbors to everyone that surrounds us. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? State your name and address or ward, please.
Hi, Jared Engler, Bush Construction, 1105 West Spring Street, Eldridge. I just wanted to clarify a couple, a couple points that have kind of been floating out in the public. One of them is that we're still looking at the entire, you know, that this request is for the entire eight acres. And that's, that's not true. I think it's clarified in your board information, but we're just talking about Lot 1, which is 1.5 acres. It's not the entire eight acres, which was part of our original request. The other one I wanted to clarify was the protest rate. When we originally had the full eight-acre development, the 200-foot radius cast a larger net around that area. And the protest rate, based on the eight acres, was 4.1%. Since we've revised the request to 1.5 acres, the new protest rate is zero. No neighbors are within that 200-foot radius and are able to protest. So I just wanted to clarify that. We've confirmed that with city staff as well, that the protest rate is currently zero. And I just wanted to put that on the record. And again, the last comment is just, we're just talking about our current development. There's been a lot of talk about, what are we gonna, what are we gonna come at in the future? You know, as soon as this gets rezoned, we're gonna be right back up here. That's not the case. We want to get this development underway. That's the development we're talking about. We have no plans at this point to come back to council and request new zoning for the remainder of the eight acres. So just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? State your name and address or ward, please.
Mike Ferris, 50th Street Court, Davenport. I, good afternoon. And my wife and I have been clients of Stacy's for more than 10 years. We were excited for her when she took the big leap to open her own business, and she's been very successful with that. She and Chris have been successful because they devote all their time and effort to their business. A few months ago, Stacy told me she was wanting to expand her business and build a new building. Again, I was excited for her and thought, what a great opportunity, what a great business move, instead of a tenant, I will now be an owner. Not long ago, we had a conversation about the project, and I was somewhat surprised to hear the planning zone had denied her request. She asked my opinion because she knew I had worked for the City of Davenport Community Economic Development for over 30 years. After reviewing the situation, I volunteered to come here tonight to offer my opinion. I know many discussions have taken place, and many opinions have been heard. I am hoping to offer a little different perspective for your consideration. As you're keenly aware, rezoning often creates concern and uneasiness among those involved. And you, as a council, have the toughest task. Get through all the information, the concerns, the what-ifs, and decide what's really right. Reviewing its zoning ordinance, the intent of C0 zoning reads in part, "This district is intended to provide for commercial uses that may utilize existing residential structures located in areas that were originally residential, but now are predominantly of mixed residential, commercial uses." Although C0 can be used as a buffer between residential and commercial ground, I believe the primary intent of C0 is to allow for small businesses to locate to existing residential structures in areas that have changed in character because of population and traffic pattern changes. You see this in older areas in our city along Brady and Harrison, East and West Locust Street, and other areas where houses are now, become small businesses. You see it in residential buildings where the bottom floor is commercial and the upper floor is residential. So the intent of C1, as it stated in our ordinance says, "The district is intended to provide for individual or small groups of retail, customer service establishments, serving primarily the convenience of a local neighborhood, and the character, appearance, and operation of which are compatible with the character of the surrounding area." Now, I believe the proper, the primary intent of C1 is to allow small businesses to locate along main corridors that approach or are near existing or new residential neighborhoods as a step-down or buffer for high-use commercial businesses. This is such an area as Utica Ridge Road. When looking at the rezoning request, I would offer the opinion that the subject area should have been originally platted as C1 along Utica Ridge Road. One would reasonably expect commercial property at this location on Utica Ridge to be higher use, retail storefronts, and the property behind the street to be office park or lower use. The subject lot is immediately adjacent to C2 zoning, surrounded by commercial zoning. It will not directly abut any residential property and still maintains a 600-foot separation from the nearest residential property. The lot zone C0 north of 58th Street and the remaining C0 zoning surrounding this lot would be the step-down or buffer between the commercial and the residential areas that now exist. It makes sense that the frontage along Utica Ridge Road would be C1. I would also like to point out that the neighbors living in the Villas at Crow Valley have a valid concern. If a request to rezone the remaining C0 ground immediately adjacent to their property to a higher use were to come forward in the future, much harder luck would be required. Approving this rezoning would not be an automatic rezoning for the remaining lots. It shouldn't be. That should be separate consideration and take into account the proximity to their Villas. McCarthy-Bush has proven to be an excellent company that is a stake in our community and that neighborhood. I'd be confident that they would listen to the neighbors, as they have with this rezoning, and work with them for the best outcome for the future use of the remaining parcel. However, I believe the change from C0 to C1 for the lot along Utica Ridge Road, Lot 1, is the correct zoning. This change would be consistent with zoning practices, the 600-foot separation, the remaining C0 buffer, the compatibility consistency with existing retail along Utica Ridge Road. And those would be the keys in deciding how this should be zoned. And one last point. Under the Small Business Section of the city website, it states, "City of Davenport recognizes that small businesses are the foundation of our community." And as Alderman Madsen pointed out recently, Davenport was named the Small Business Community of the Year in 2017. This development is from a small, homegrown business by a lifelong resident of Davenport. These are the people that are backbone of our community and are future leaders because they believe in Davenport and the opportunity it provides. I hope you'll continue to support this rezoning request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? State your name and address or ward, please.
Tara Jacobson and I reside at 3837 East 61st Boulevard. I live in Lakehurst and do not oppose the building at 56th and Utica Ridge. I think it would be an asset to the neighborhood, and it would be nice to have small businesses to be able to walk to. And thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? State your name and address or ward, please.
Greg Bush, and I'm the developer. And unfortunately, not a member of the Sixth Ward as of Friday. But disappointed to that. Three quick points. Number one, through the course of this, I've heard several people mention that they've talked to the developer prior to buying property with a specific, that there would be no rezoning. I can go on record today to tell you, not a single resident has ever talked to me as the developer, and I am the developer. So I don't know who they talked to, but they did not talk to the developer. Second thing, I will also go on record to say that whatever happens, we have no intention to come with any further zoning requests at this time. But if we did, we would do nothing beyond C1 with restrictions. There is no, I will tell you, we will not come with any further opening up of the zoning beyond what we've said at this point in time. And the third point is, because of the activity here, we actually have had some people coming to us and talking about the possibility. You know, it's very preliminary. A couple of people, both of them were CO. And that's really what we're looking for. So we think that there will be a nice CO buffer between this development and the people of the local neighborhood. Thank you very much.
State your name and address or ward, please.
Dennis Kramer. I live in the Villas of Crow Valley, and I'm from the Sixth Ward. I really hate to come to you tonight and spend my time talking about this, but there's something that you've been mentioning at every council meeting here that I think is just a little misleading, and I want to give my own perspective to it. Four of you have mentioned five different times how good of a process it is that the petitioner and the neighbors get together and talk and try to negotiate, and how compromise and have consensus, and how they offered 13 restrictions. So I want to talk about that a little bit. It was good to have a meeting, it really was. I'm not sure what really drove it, was what's on the table. But anyway, there was no city rep there. Okay? So unfortunately, you've been relying on what the petitioner's been telling you, what the petitioner has been telling you how that went. And I don't think you talked to any of the neighbors about it and got their perspective about it. So I want to give my perspective. First of all, as far as compromise and, you know, negotiations 101. It's, it's, you know, the starting point. Shoot for the stars. Ask for what you really, don't really need or care about, and then settle for what you really want. C2, eight acres. Now it's one small lot for C1, a foot in the door. And I believe city staff had already told them prior to that meeting that C2 wasn't gonna fly. So they came prepared with an alternative. And then they could say they compromised. As to the 13 restrictions that were presented as a compromise, first of all, they came to that meeting with a slide that already had those things crossed out, these business types that they were calling restrictions, and they were gonna compromise. It wasn't part of the negotiating with the neighbors. It was already pre-planned. Second, I don't, have you had a chance? You don't have to answer, because I know you won't. But have you had a chance to look at what those 13 restrictions really were? I'm gonna talk about them here. One, remember, this is this one little lot that we're talking about. Number one, a movie theater. Number two, a telegraph station. I don't even think telegraph stations are around anymore. Three, a public garage. You know, I don't know how many stories public garages are. You know, I don't know how many stories public garages are. Number four, a garage, storage, and parking lot. That's all in the same line item. I think they counted that as three toward their thirteen. A motel and hotel. Yeah, next to a salon, right. An undertaking establishment. We don't mind that, at least it'd be quiet. A coin-operated laundry. Really, in this neighborhood where we live? No. A filling station. A service station. And that's not likely because those people, they locate on main drags, not off where we are. And all this with a salon? Of course not. The only restrictions that we, as neighbors wanted in that meeting was for taverns, restaurants, and bars. We asked for that. Of course not. Absolutely not was the response. But that's never been mentioned by anybody here, right? So those are the restrictions that were offered as a compromise, and frankly, we were insulted. None of what they offered as a restriction was even feasible in this area. So come on. But they can tell you that they compromised. As of the consensus, there was no real consensus among any more than two or three neighbors. As a whole, we just left disillusioned because we didn't know what to do at that point. We were kind of taken by surprise. So what's bothering us, how the petitioner presented it, and what is even more, you're using that information and you're talking about it, and it's taking on a life of its own. And it's not true. I don't want to say it's fake news because that has a bad connotation, but at the very least, it was very misleading. And there was a reason for that. Anyway, that's my perspective. I want to, as far as this protest rate that Mr. Anger talked about, the 4.1%, come on, that's a technicality. That's a head-in-the-sand approach at looking at this, and we all know it. We took a survey, it was very informal, and you can argue how it was done, but the bottom line, it was well over two-thirds of our neighborhood opposed it. One last thing. The, as far as the evaluation for this whole rezoning process, we've only heard from comments from about half of you, and at least until the last meeting, it was all in favor of passing it. So I just ask you to be careful and watch out for this thing called group think. I've had it in my, where I've worked, and I've been guilty of it myself. So I just ask you to, each of you evaluate this on its merits, be an independent thinker, and a voice. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing no one, nope. State your name and address or ward, please.
My name is David Botzko. I am a, I'm in Ward Six. I live at Thirty-oh-five East Eighteenth. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to address the Ward Six pump station proposal and make a pitch.
Sir, you'll have an opportunity to do that under the Public Works Agenda, but right now, we are only hearing comments on the item number one for community development. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? State your name and address or ward, please.
Good evening, Council. Chris Spillam, Pure Hair Studio, Sixth Ward. I'm here tonight in support of our rezoning request. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your efforts and consideration over the past six weeks. As my wife said, this whole process has been quite a learning experience. I want to thank you all for your support at this point. As a small business, it takes a great deal of effort, not only to start a business, sustain a business, but to find success. We've been fortunate enough to have success, which has given us this opportunity. Opportunity to pursue our dream of investing further into the City of Davenport. We've stated that before. The facts are, we are trying to rezone 1.5 acres of land. The original request that again has come up is concern from many of the neighbors of eight acres really had nothing to do with the development that my wife and I were pursuing. We were pursuing an 8,000-square-foot commercial building to, yes, anchor our salon, but in order for us to further our investment into the City of Davenport, to bring on a couple of tenants that would help us support that development and to find great success here. Study shows right now, the entire City of Davenport and really all of the Quad Cities is oversaturated with CO office availability. For us to bring in more CO would be putting, making us take a step back and honestly would not be a good business decision. The original request for the C two and eight acres had nothing to do with our request. After speaking with the neighbors and understanding what they wanted and really what we wanted, we wanted that development, that building, the one and a half acres, 600 feet away from those neighbors. It made absolute sense to listen to those neighbors, scale that back, and add those restrictions, may it be some of them are meaningless, whatever it bid. We took out some very large ones that still allow us to be successful. We've got to have a little bit of flexibility. This is change. Change is not going to make everybody happy. We know that. But in order to survive as a small business, and I can tell you this, over the last five and a half, six years, we've had to make several changes. We've had to adjust our business plan. We've had to add, we've had to add employees when maybe we didn't think we could afford it because our projections were high. Change is necessary. If anything is constant, it is change, and we have to be prepared for that. We are asking for a little bit of help, a little bit of support from you, Council, to help us make that change. Again, we are going from a CO to a C one with thirteen restrictions, which is about as minimal of a change as you could ask for. These properties currently reside within 200 feet of a C two, which far exceeds what we are asking for, and we're three times the distance from that. They currently, the way it sits right now, would be completely buffered by 600 feet of CO, which we would gladly welcome office buildings. That is only potential for additional clients for our salon as well as the two retail spaces. So Council, again, tonight, I ask for your support in helping us deepen our investment into the City of Davenport. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? State your name and address or ward, please.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Steve Powell, Forty-two-Ten East Fifty-Eighth Street. And I was up here before you, and I will restate a little bit of what I said before. I support small business people because I am a small business person. I also own a building larger than the one that, my wife and I own it, bigger than the one that is being described to you. My question is, what can't they do with CO that is compliant and is in sync with the surrounding area? They don't need a C one. We control in our building who the tenants are, and they can be lawyers, they can be CPA firms, they can be financial offices, they can be offices that comply with CO. They don't need C one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I'll open it up for council discussion. Anyone from the council? Alderman Mattson.
Thank you. Just curious, Mr. Warner, can we restrict anymore if we approve C one?
Well, you could in agreement with the developer.
Okay.
So I don't know if there, what types of conversations have occurred between the developer and the CPED staff.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Kuhl. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, this has been an interesting ten weeks through this process, as we've all sat down at one time or another and talked about what's going on here. I will say that I was one of those four people who was involved in this process early on. I believe that it was a good process. I participated in the neighborhood meetings to begin with. I was not part of the developer meeting with the association, but I was part of those previous meetings, and I thought that it was exactly the way these things should work, starting from the community level where it grassroots. We talk about the concerns, the issues, the desires of a developer, and it moves up to the grass tops with the people behind this dais here making a decision. And Connie, this decision matrix that you prepared, the work that you've gone to to prepare this, is outstanding. I appreciate it. In the end, though, it comes down to what you said, it's about the totality. And sometimes the totality, you know, isn't found in a matrix. There are other decisions that take place that just belie their ability to be included inside a matrix, and so I appreciate the fact that you talked about, in the end, it is the totality, because it is. I, you know, I've listened, I've listened to folks from the audience, I've toured the area a number of times, I've listened to folks here on the council talk these last six weeks, listened to all those things, and I most recently have heard from the people from the Lakehurst community. Lakehurst has done an informal survey, and some of those folks are concerned about this development, proposed development as well. And I talked to them about this issue of the 200-foot notice zone, and across Iowa, it is, 200-foot is used as a standard basis for allowing people to provide input to a proposed development. And I think it's reasonable. I think it's probably been well thought out. Granted, the folks outside in Lakehurst are beyond 200-foot, and this will affect them because there will be increased traffic, although the traffic will be coming down Fifty-Sixth, not Utica Ridge, but still, no doubt, there's an impact. But it's the level of significance that's important. So I listened to their concern, and I think it is a concern, legitimate concern. However, I don't think it leads to that level of significance, that I would say that that would be a negative as far as the development is concerned. I've stated before that, one of my concerns, a couple of concerns, one is that people purchase property with the intent that, the zoning that is there is what they're going to have in the future. I mean, they put down their money and they have some expectations. The comprehensive plan, as Connie said, is residential general. It does provide for this kind of development at the edge of the property, which would be Utica Ridge and Fifty-Sixth. One of the things that has come up, I think, is a strong concern about the domino effect, the potential domino effect of allowing C one and then next comes C two. And I have said that, you know, I would vociferously oppose anything other than CO outside of Lot One. Now, I recognize my term here is limited to two, four, six, I don't know how many years I'll be here, but perhaps, you know, the developer will come back at some point, and that knowledge, that demand to make sure that this step down to CO is maintained as CO might be lost. But as I look at, as Connie, as you mentioned, you know, the future zoning is becoming more strict rather than less strict in that regard, so I'm pretty confident that Public Works is following that line of trying to make sure that we retain a balance between residential and development. I think that's important, so I really believe that that protection is going to be there even though I might not. So my vote tonight will be to approve. I believe that in totality, this is good for Davenport, it's good for the Sixth Ward. I think it strikes a balance. Although all residents aren't going to be happy, I think that it does strike a balance over that process that we worked through the neighborhood meetings and through the six weeks here on the council. So I appreciate everything that everybody has come forward to say. I'm sorry that some will be disappointed in my decision, but it's the best decision that I can make at this point. Thank you.
Alderwoman McGuinness.
Thank you, Alderman Gribb. It's unfortunate that in rezoning so often, some people feel like some are going to lose and some are going to win. It seems, and I know that feeling. I've sat in the seats. I would, you know, when you, when you, when you live in a house that was once a cornfield, your view's probably going to change eventually. And that's something, you know, I live in a neighborhood, and most of my ward is a neighborhood that's been developed for many, many, many years. But in truth, in new developments, what is around you is likely to change. And I have, you know, great respect for someone trying to expand their business, I have, you know, great respect for the developer in question, but I have issues with when one lot out of a large area is rezoned. It feels, as I said last week, it feels to me like spot zoning. I would, if what had been brought before us was even commercial C one zoning along the front edge, all along that front edge, with what was to come behind in a planned development district, I might have been in favor of that. Because then I would know there is a step down to the neighborhood. I think neighborhoods are very important. We're not going to be building neighborhoods in the future like we did in the sixties and seventies where everything is residential and nothing is commercial, and you have to drive halfway around your elbow to get out, and you have no walking restaurants, you have none of that. We're going to be building mixed use, we have to. One of the reasons why our city is 65 square miles is we've allowed it to sprawl into that. So that neighborhood that is unto itself is probably, it wasn't really healthy, a healthy thing for the city to do. It's actually hurt us in the long run. But I don't want to see us propagate situation where you have neighborhoods and they don't know what's going to be butting up against them. And so I can't, I'm not going to support this, and I said that last week. I certainly wish everyone success in their business, but come to me, as an alderman, I'm going to always be asking, what is the plan for the land? What is the, what is the use for the large plot of land? And that's something that's going to be, I'm going to be asking again and again and again, because I think it's important. And I think that's my job as an alderman, and with all respect to whatever my fellow aldermen feel. So thank you.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. You know, all I've ever asked is for people to be a good neighbor, and sometimes that's asking too much. But we have a young lady that wants to open a business, and has pledged that all she wants to be is a good neighbor and part of the neighborhood. They listen to the neighborhood, and they seem to embrace, to embrace that vision, too. Unfortunately, people continue to come up and make the assumption that there's going to be a bar, a restaurant, and that bar or restaurant can't be a good neighbor. I live in a neighborhood with many restaurants and establishments that have been there for 50, 60 years, and they're great neighbors. You couldn't ask for better people. The people that work there are great neighbors, and they add to our community. So assuming that it's going to be a restaurant, there's going to be problems, I'm really disappointed, and I know there's a lot of business owners that have been in our community for many, many years that run restaurants. When they hear this, it really is disturbing to them. So you make an assumption about the restaurants, there's no more bars in the community, they're all restaurants that serve liquor. So I think we got a whole lot in common with the neighborhood and the young lady that wants to do this development, and to make these assumptions, you know, your way off base, and to besmirch good businesses that are in our community, that are restaurants, and they might serve liquor, you know, I'm, that's very disturbing to me. You know, all we ask is for people to be good neighbors, and she's made a commitment to be a good neighbor, and I think she deserves the opportunity. We've got the family that's developed- We've got the family that's developed that, they've pledged to the neighborhood, so, you know, let's move this thing forward and get it built, get the businesses going, and see what happens. Yeah. And let's step back, you know, I sit up here and I listen to developments, you know, we rezone all the time. And all the neighbors, you know, I hear it time and time again, you know, they talk down about restaurants that serve liquor, they talk down about gas stations, service stations. I got some of the greatest people in my neighborhood, in my ward, that do these businesses, and you can't find better people. And I just, you gotta stop assuming that they're going to be negative to your neighborhood.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Seeing no one else, I will provide one last comment. And I want to start by saying that I think that this neighborhood has been thoughtful, well researched, civil in their approach, and it's greatly appreciated. You've listened to us, which is very clear, because when you come back the following week, you talk to those points, and I appreciate that. A couple of things that were stated today, the protest rate being 0%. Yeah, yes, we understand that the official protest rate is 0%. There are neighbors who have concerns, both in the Villas and also in Lake Hurst. We understand that, I don't think there's a person on this, the dais, that doesn't understand that and doesn't take that into consideration. And then also, you know, that this small rezoning will lead to kind of a slippery slope argument that now it will be easier to develop the remaining roughly seven acres. I don't find that to be the case. Now, obviously, the developer can come back at any time. It could be in three months, it could be in three years or 30 years. But they can come back, and the council that is sitting will take in all of these items that are on the matrix. That council, whether it be this one or future ones, will consider all of those things and make the best decision based on the information they have at that time. The other thing I wanted to talk about was use, and Alderwoman McGinnis brought up the neighborhood concept where we went away from having some of these mixed-use developments within neighborhoods or near neighborhoods, and we've gone to kind of you live in one place and you do everything else in another place. And people who are building cities are going back to, we do different things in the same space. And I know that some of you may disagree with the use that the petitioner has brought forward, but I understand this retail experience, to be competitive in retail experience, I think what you're getting, you're going to get a high-end product. I don't see this as a nuisance rezoning. Actually, I see it as a desirable use. I see it as a place that people who have families now will be looking to get into neighborhoods where they can walk to their salon, where they can walk to a boutique, where they can walk to get a sip of wine. And so for me, that's kind of where I stand. I've stated that to you all each week. My position hasn't changed on that. So with that, we will move on to items number two and three. Or, no, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Item number two, which is the second consideration for an ordinance amending the boundaries and exemption schedules of the central city and north urban revitalization areas. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to recommend that we suspend the rules and pass this on the second reading and get the process moving forward.
That motion fails to gain a second. Is there anyone else with comment? Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Alderman Gribb. I was wondering if someone could, staff could speak to, we've talked about, a lot about the central city and those core neighborhoods, and could speak to the focus on the northern urban revitalization area as well, just a few comments on that. It's easy for people, I think, to understand the core neighborhoods, but also the rationale for the northern areas as well. Thanks.
Bruce Berger, you're Community Planning and Economic Development Director. Yeah, so the, one of the changes before you is the increase in single-family, for the most part, incentive, and it's in the south EDA area or south URTE area, which is basically what I think we generally call the urban core. So it does allow, as I think maybe you mentioned before, it does allow a little bit greater single-family new development as well as rehab compared to the three-year, 10-year, three-year sliding, three-year 100% schedule to the 10-year 100% schedule, so.
I'm sorry, my question was about the northern area, if you could talk about.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misheard. So the northern area, in terms of the urban revitalization, yeah, you're right. I mean, by splitting the area into a north and a south area, the north area would only have the three-year 100% exemption, so it doesn't enjoy, from the urban revitalization standpoint, it doesn't enjoy the single-family development as much, right?
But again, just, and why did we have it in there, I guess, is my question, that you could just share. Why are we doing the northern development as well? There's the...
The property additions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right, now I'm tracking with you. So the additional property in the northern area, some of it, and the biggest portions actually include some commercial areas. And so our industrial park, for example, it will allow some additional incentives in that for businesses that are growing, that are in our current area to grow. Sometimes some of the large businesses that come in, we're able to provide some other incentives for those, but businesses that are actually here already and growing, URTE is a great tool, and it hasn't been available out in that industrial area, so.
Alderwoman Dickman?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to let everyone know that I have gotten at least one call about, you know, the word is out there now about the URTE, and so there's been a request to add some parcels to it. Just wanted to let everyone know that that is a potential discussion, so that we don't have anyone saying that there was things being done without being discussed. But obviously, we would want to make sure that any additions or deletions of the boundaries are fully vetted. So that is all. Thank you.
Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for another opportunity. You know, the city sent out letters months ago, and people have received this information, and they've been holding off on doing projects around their home, waiting for this to be finalized. And a great opportunity, and, you know, summer's over, you know, fall is around the corner, you know, a lot of these people are going to miss out on the opportunity to do work on their home because of the season. You know, I think suspending the rules and moving this forward quickly, that's just good business.
Seeing no other comments, this item will move on. Item number three and four, it is to be noted that the petitioner has withdrawn the items three and four. We will not be discussing them, and this is for your information only. So we will be moving on to item number five, which is a resolution for case F-18-09, being the request of O'Bro's LLC for the final plat for Eastern Avenue Farms, 5th addition, containing 47 lots. The property is located east of 61st Street, one-third mile east of Eastern Avenue. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Anyone from the council? Alderman Kuhl?
Just a note, although we would like to think that everything City Council is 6th Ward business, this one is not, it's actually Ward 8 and not Ward 6.
Seeing no other comments from the council, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution for case F-18-06, a bush construction for a final plat of Crow Valley Plaza, 11th addition, on 8.13 acres more or less, being a replat of Lot 2 of Crow Valley Plaza, 10th addition, located along the north side of East 56th Street and east of Utica Ridge Road, containing two lots. Should be noted that this item is tied to item number one in the community development agenda that we've just discussed. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? State your name and address or ward.
Dennis Kramer, the 6th Ward. You have to pardon me, I'm totally new to this process. Can you just give a brief explanation of what this is, and then I might have a question or comment?
I'm going to have Director Berger come up and speak on behalf of CPED, and then if you have another question, be sure to come right back up. Yep.
Bruce Berger, you're Community Planning and Economic Development Director. Again, the item number six is actually a subdivision, if you will, it's splitting the 8.1 acres into two lots, so the Lot 1 and Lot 2, so that they become separate lots. And so in essence, depending, I mean, it is separate from your zoning issue. So if the developer wanted to sell off one lot, regardless of any zoning decision, this is what would allow them to split them, essentially.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? Is there anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution approving case F-18-11, being the request of Spear Development LLC for the final plat of Spear Commercial, 1st addition, containing three lots. The property is located at the southeast corner of East 53rd Street and Eastern Avenue. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? State your name and address or ward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Your Honor, members of the council. My name is Greg Jager. I'm an attorney at the Pasternak Firm, 300 Blocka West 3rd. Here tonight, not on behalf of the applicant, which is Spear LLC. Mr. Spear is here in the back of the audience, along with the engineer who prepared the plat. I'm here speaking on behalf of Gurley Leap, who will be the ultimate user for Lot 1. We're asking the council to remove the final condition attached to the resolution on this plat. The last time I came before the council on this matter was really in regards to the rezoning of the parcel for the Gurley Leap construction. And in that, although my notes didn't say anything explicitly about what this street was to be, certainly it was implicitly discussed. We talked about traffic signalization, we talked about dedication of ground, we talked about deceleration lanes. We even talked about potential uses on the very south edge of Lot 1. And the council will recall in the ordinance that did the rezoning, there were restrictions on the type of uses that would go on the south end of Lot 1, even though at the time we said, no, we don't anticipate doing that. Now, if there are going to be additional uses on the south edge, how do you get to those uses? You got to do it with a street. So at least there was implicit discussion that there was going to be a street. The plat that's before you this evening is constructed with the expectation that there would be a street. You see a hammerhead at the bottom of that street. The only purpose for a hammerhead in terms of development is to allow the public access to make turns of their vehicles. It serves no purpose for the developer, and this was prepared in the expectation of this being a public road. Also, the width of the street at 60 foot was established in order to mirror and match what's across the street. If this were simply to be a private street or a driveway of some sort, it would be a lot less wide, because the developer's needs would be a lot less. Now, when I started looking at the resolution, I wanted to find out what a private roadway or a private street is and what the difference is between a public and a private. Now, obviously, there's the public access, but what are the other considerations that should be considered? What I found in your site plan ordinance is that a driveway, not a street, but a driveway, should be no wider than 30 foot as it crosses the sidewalk. Now, obviously, what you've got here is a right-turn lane going onto 53rd, a left-turn lane going onto 53rd, and an incoming lane. It's going to be wider than 30 foot as it comes across the sidewalk. It's not a driveway. So then I looked at private street. If it's not a public street, is it a private street? And what I found in your zoning definitions on private street, a privately owned and maintained thoroughfare, which affords the principal means of access to a budding property. It sounds like a private street to me. It's the access point for lots 1, 2, and 3. But there's an additional condition in that section of your zoning code. Private streets shall only be located within a PUD and must meet the paving standards of the city. This is not a PUD, this is a commercially zoned lot. In fact, there are several commercially zoned. Lot 1 is commercial, Lot 2 is commercial, Lot 3, as it works its way to the back, is actually multifamily. But in none of the cases of this particular plat is it zoned PUD. So since your zoning code restricts private streets to PUD, it's not a private street, it's not a public street. What you're left with is something that's really not defined in your city code. And if it's not defined in your city code, you're not going to get the type of street surface that you want. I expect that you want to have a drainable base, requisite inches of concrete, you want a roadway that's going to last over a course of time. And as a public street, which is how the plat was set up, you're in a position to assure that that takes place. As a private street, private roadway, it's not a private street because it's a zoning issue. It's a private roadway, you're not. There's no linkage that I could find in your code to the standards of a private street if it's not a private street. So we're asking that you would consider removing this condition and making it a public street. It's what was initially talked about when we started the rezoning process. It makes sense because it provides the type of construction of the roadway that you want. And just lastly, Your Honor, for purposes of introduction, we do have Nick Tarpen here. He is the general manager of all the product lines for Gurley Leap in the Quad Cities, and also Bill Connors, who is the construction manager for Gurley Leap. He's handling both the new project and also the demolition project as the old buildings are removed on Harrison. Your Honor, we hope that I'm able to explain with sufficient detail why this should take place. I can assure you that the property taxes generated, even though snow removal is paid for in large amounts with road use taxes, the property taxes associated with this are going to more than offset the cost of the incidental snow removal. So we would ask for your favorable consideration of our request. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? State your name and address or ward, please.
Good evening. My name's Brian Spear. I'm with Spear Development, I'm the developer. We just like, I'd just like to ask again that we support this road being public. Out of the 32 acres, we have 19 acres of, we don't know what we're going to do with it yet. There's a lot of different options. How we access that back part, I mean, you got to remember that we've got two different landowners. So speaking for Ed Spear Construction, Inc., which is all RF5M property, that property has always been somewhat landlocked because there's no access off 53rd Street. So it's real important that spring stays a public street. And down the road, if this turns out where we sell the whole thing to a car dealer, we can settle that then, but right now, we ask it to be public. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll open it up for council discussion. Alderwoman Tompkins?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to clarify that, just to beat Alderman Kuhl to this, this isn't in the 6th Ward, this is in the 8th Ward. So just to clarify that. Two, thank you so much for coming down tonight and explaining kind of where this project is going. And then I'd like to ask staff, and if you can speak to this tonight, great. If not, if we can get a response before next week. Just to clarify, I know there's been a lot, just as much as learning about water, I've learned a lot about private streets and private drives. learned a lot about private streets and private drives. And I know that that's something that we really question and question bringing those, bringing more of those into the city. So looking for some clarification. Thank you.
Brian Shad, Public Works. Staff reviewed this and really we're looking at this as a matter of consistency. I gave the example of Elmore Avenue. There's a lot of business, commercial business, as well as some multifamily residential up through the entire corridor. Those are all served via private roadways, with some of the subdivisions having access easements across them so that you can blanket across and make it through to each of the businesses. And as a point of clarification, under the subdividing ordinance, it does list that every lot needs to be fronted by either a private roadway or a public street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom? Are you familiar with the request a developer has made?
Alderman Ambrose, I am not. I'll have to talk to the CPED staff and Public Works to see exactly why it's getting pushed toward a private street and come back.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, but, you know, to make the delete, the request made by the developer, can that be done now or should we wait till Wednesday?
I would wait till next Wednesday.
Okay. And you will contact a developer, so we have a better understanding?
Well, as Alderman Tompkins asked, we'll check into it with the CPED and Public Works and see exactly, provide you all with the pros and cons and the thinking behind the private street versus the public street. And then you can make a decision next week on whether you leave that condition in or not. Thanks.
Alderman Manson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So to clarify, what's being asked is a private street, they're asking for, to change to public, correct?
That's my understanding.
That's my understa-- okay, right. And private roads have to still meet the code requirements of our public roads?
No, they don't.
Okay.
But that's one of the longstanding issues that you're all familiar with that we've been pushing for years, is that if someone is going to put in a private street--
Oh, okay.
--you want it to be built nonetheless to city standards.
Of course.
Because eventually, they have a tendency to come back.
Of course, that's what I meant, right? Yeah.
Brian, can I, can I ask a follow-up question? Because I think I heard Mr. Jager say that a private street can only be located within a PUD. And I didn't know if that last statement you made before you sat down was related to that, or do you know if that, if that's a true statement?
We can certainly review that just to make sure, but we were actually just checking the subdividing code itself, and it actually calls out private, excuse me, private or public streets.
Okay. And I think, you know, there's, there's some, we want to be consistent, we want to make sure that whatever we're doing is in line with what our code says. So if you could just follow up with us in, by next week, and just for clarification for everybody, this is a resolution for a final plat, so it is only a one-cycle item, so we would be voting on this next Wednesday. Alderman Dunn?
Thank you. I'm just curious what the cost is. Estimated?
Staff hasn't looked into that. I would have to defer to the developer.
I'm assuming you're expecting us to pay for the road? Okay. Just maintenance?
Can I have, can I have somebody? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Greg Jager again. Speaking on behalf of Gurley Leap, again, my representation is limited in this matter. The city, the developer would construct the roadway, this developer would pay all the costs associated with the roadway. The city would be expected to pay the maintenance of the roadway and, I suppose, snow removal. I don't expect any real maintenance on a brand-new street for a good number of years, so I think the cost there is small, especially given that it would be built to city specifications. Long as I'm up here, if I could just answer for staff so they can make their review a little quicker. Seventeen point zero four point zero one zero point three twenty of the zoning code. It's in the definition section is what I was referencing. Thank you, sir.
Alderwoman Tompkins?
Thank you for letting me speak again. I just wanted to clarify, as Mr. Jager just did, that the road would be built to city standards, to the city code, so thank you.
Seeing no other comment from council, that item will stay on discussion and we will move to item number eight. Resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of vacated public right-of-way, that being a part of Fairhaven Road lying south of Fifty-third Street in between lots two and three of Hanlon's Edition. WCT Investments LLC is the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Item number nine is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of five parcels located south of the Salvation Army Building at the northwest corner of Fifth and Harrison. Arsonal Properties LLC is the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. I would ask that Alderman Cool set the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Gripp. I move that items number one and two being moved forward to discussion, three and four were withdrawn, five consent, six consent, seven discussion, eight and nine consent.
There's a motion and a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? All opposed, same sign? That concludes community development this evening.
Thank you very much. I think at this point, we're going to take a five or ten-minute break, so we will reassemble at seven twenty-five.[1048.36]
Thank you for a little break. Our second area this evening to be discussed is public safety and Alderman Russen will lead that discussion and Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to read these in sections and the first one's going to be fairly lengthy, so I may do a quick break in the middle to get input. So we'll begin with section one. Resolutions closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events. Davenport Community School District West High Homecoming Parade, September 13th, 2018, 4:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. Closure location, the parade starts at the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds, west on Eighteenth Street, north on Elsie Avenue, west on Lombard Street, south on Nevada Avenue, crossing Locust Street and ending at West High School Parking Lot. Quad Cities Celtic, Celtic Organization, Celtic Festival and Highland Games of the Quad Cities, September 14th through 15th, 2018, 6:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. Closure location, Warren Street to Biderbeck Drive. St. Ambrose University Killer Bee 5K Run Walk, September 22nd, 2018, 8:00 a.m. until the race finishes. Closure location is Ripley Street from High to Dover Court. Dover Court from High to Gaines Street, Gaines Street to High Street. Rush Home from Gaines to Lilly Avenue. Lilly from Rush Home to Pleasant Street. Warren Street from Pleasant Street to Spalding Boulevard. Quad Cities Marathon Race Committee. The Quad Cities Marathon, September 23rd, 2018, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Closure location is Gaines Street to Centennial Bridge, off Ramp. Second Street to Western, to River Drive, to Bike Path. Government Bridge to Second Street to Perry Street to Bike Path. Now of those four that I just read, does anyone from the public have any commentary on any of those items? Anyone from council? All right, moving along. J&amp;M Displays, Fireworks for Wedding at Modern Woodman Park, September 29th, 5:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. Closure location, behind Modern Woodman Park and Bike Path adjacent while live mortars are in use. Mary's on Second, the Unity Fall Pride Celebration. Oh, Alderman Manson, do you have something on that?
I'll tell you whenever you get the break.
Okay. Mary's on Second, Unity Fall Pride Celebration, October 5th through 6th, 2018, 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Closure location, Second Street from Brown to the exit of the post office and Warren Street from the alley south of Second Street to the alley north of Second Street. Davenport Fire Antique and Restoration Society. Annual Fire muster, October 7th, 2018, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Closure location, Eleventh Street from Mound to Jersey Ridge. Davenport Fire Antique and Restoration Society, annual antique fire procession, October 7th, 2018, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., beginning at Modern Woodman Park. North on Western, west on Fourth Street, north on Waverly, north on Lincoln Avenue, east on Locust Street, north on Eastern, east on 32nd Street, south on Bell Avenue, east on 31st Street, and south on Jersey Ridge to Fire Museum. They could make their route just a little bit longer. Of those four that I just read, anyone from the public have any comments on any of those? Okay, and Alder...
Answer my own question.
Okay. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just glad to see that Marys will be open soon and we'll have our pride celebration down in the neighborhood again. It's good to have them back.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Anyone else from council? Seeing and hearing no one, moving on. Edwin Hildebrand, Davenport, Chapter Two, Quad Cities, 2018 Veterans Day Parade, November 12th, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Closure location, starting at Fourth and Western Avenue, south on Western Avenue to Second Street, east on Second Street to Main Street, north on Main Street to Fourth Street, and west on Fourth Street to Western, the parade ends. Genesis Health Remembrance Tree Lighting, November 10th, 2018, 12:00 noon to 7:30 p.m. Closure location will be Iowa Street between River Drive and Second Street. And I guess on those two items, that's the end of that section. Anyone from the public have any commentary on either one of those? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, moving on to section two. Motion approving noise variance requests for various events on the listed dates and times. There's three items. Hilltop Village Campus Retro Fest, September 15th, 2018, noon to 10:00 p.m., outdoor music over 50 dB. J&amp;M Displays, Fireworks for Wedding at Modern Woodman Park, September 29th, 2018, 9:30 p.m. to 9:45 p.m., over 50 dB. And Mary's on Second, 8:30 to West Second Street, Unity Fall Pride Celebration, October 5th and 6th, 2018, Friday from 4:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Saturday noon to 1:00 a.m., outdoor music over 50 dB. Anyone from the public have any comments on any of those three items? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, moving on to section three. One item, a motion approving the petition for two lights on Madison Street between Locust and Seventeenth Streets in Fourth Ward. Anyone from the public have a comment about that? Anyone from council? That one will move on. Section four, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. These are for new licenses, new owners, temporary permits, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. Celtic, and I will read all of these in one fell swoop. Celtic Festival and Highland Games of the Quad Cities, 1200 Biderbeck Drive, outdoor area, September 13th, 2018. Celtic Festival, license type B. The Key, 229 Brady Street, Suite 102, license type C. Me and Billy, 200 West Third Street, outdoor area, premise update only, expanding to absorb adjacent unit at 216 West Third, license type C. Riverside Liquor II, 1528 West Locust Street, license type E. And Rookie Sports Bar, well, two more. Rookie Sports Bar, 2818 Brady Street, outdoor area, September 22nd through the 23rd, 2018, for Customer Appreciation Day, license type C. And finally, Cactus LLC at 2843 East 53rd, license type C. Anyone from the public would like to comment on any of those items? Yes, sir. Come step to the podium, state your name and address. And which item are you commenting on?
My name is Sambul Fordal. My address is 1511 West Locust. I have a gas station and one liquor license he applied here, just across the street. And his address is 1525, I think. And we have the Peterson signature, 77 people. And they are, is going to crime and accident where it's to surrounding area. We are the concern about the personal and community safety. We are the following below the Peterson for this issue. We have the sign for the people.
And you're at 1511 Locust, is that?
It's MI, yeah, it's for 1511 West Locust.
Okay. Can I actually see, can I see that, Jackie?
Okay, I can see.
Okay. Thank you. Any... Thanks. Anyone else from the public would like to comment on any of those items? Anyone from council? We have Alderman Ambrose, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I received a petition from the neighbors and Jackie will make copies of it and put them in our box, but you know, this has been kind of a controversial situation with many of the neighbors and we'll be having a meeting with city attorney and the police chief on this as we move forward before next week. Thanks.
Has that meeting been scheduled already or... Okay. Okay. All right, can you ask...
Mr. Chair, could you identify, what item on the agenda was the gentleman speaking?
Oh, which item?
It's number five, Riverside Liquor, two brothers, Locust.
Thank you.
And Alderman Ambrose or Tom, add me to the notification list if you would, for the meeting.
Yeah, I talked to Brian earlier.
Okay.
And we'll follow up with Tom.
Alderman Gripp.
I just wanted to seek clarification on the Celtic Festival and Highland Games. That we've had a discussion with that group. Remember last year after their event, they came down here with a number of complaints and I just want to make sure that we've engaged with them and then we all have mutual expectations. Okay.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. They had issues with access because of the sewer work down off of River Drive last year. It impacted their attendance, but I don't think we're going to have that problem this year.
Anyone else from council would like to comment on any of these items? Seeing and hearing no one, I'll go ahead and ask Alderman Condon to set an agenda. Yeah, let's put it on. Oh, so the annual license, oh, renewals, sorry, I forgot. So there's a list of annual license renewals there at the end of your, this section, and those won't be read, they're just there for your information. And now, with that being said, and no other items on this agenda, I'll ask Alderman Condon to go ahead and set an agenda. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. MC Happy Hollow, you know, it's kind of been an issue in the Washington Street neighborhood. Can we get a police report and an opinion on their licenses and how it's been this year? Thanks.
That's it. Okay. Alderman Condon.
I move to put Riverside Liquor II on the discussion agenda and all other items on the consent agenda.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that passes, Your Honor. Back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Russen and Alderman Condon. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works. Alderman Ambrose will lead that discussion. Alderman Dunn will set the agenda.
Thank you, Honor.
I have a little problem separating the pages here. That's what happens when you get old. First item in discussion is resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Fourth and Leclerc Street Sewer Separation Project. Estimated cost, $387,730.20. Anybody from the public?
Sorry.
Counsel? Anybody from the counsel? The next item is resolution approving the FY 2018 Street Finance Report from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018, to be submitted to the Iowa Department of Transportation. Anybody from the public? Counsel? We've done a lot of great work and I want to thank the Golden Public Works for all their effort. Number three is a resolution approving the contract for the construction of the Jersey Ridge Road at Cromwell Circle and 65th Street Center Lane, Center Turn Lane project to NJ Miller Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of $441,449.79. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number four is resolution approving the plan's specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West 16th Street Resurfacing Project. Anybody from the public? Do we have someone from staff to talk a little bit about this?
This project is part of our Neighborhood Asphalt Streets CIP and we've got a great capable staff out of Public Works. However, with item number two, the street finance report, we do have our DOT thresholds as far as how much work we can do. This is in conjunction with our contractors where we bid it out and if we're able to perform the work at a cheaper price, we will do that.
So, you're going to get to it this year, or someone's going to get to it this year?
Yes, that's the goal.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Number five is a resolution approving the contract for the Main Street Landing Phase Two project from Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of $823,668 in authorizing Mayor Frank Klipsch to sign and manage a related agreement. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Our city administrator, briefly, can you update this for the public?
Sure, this is the phase two. The current construction is taking out all of the existing infrastructure. This will replace all of the hardscape infrastructure and there'll be future bids that come to council with the furnitures and furniture and fixtures.
Thanks, Cora. Number six is a resolution approving the contract for Twin City Stripe in Illinois, Minnesota, in the amount of $171,114 for the long line painting with an optional second year renewal. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number seven is resolution approving the specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for pump station 203 generator and control project. Anybody from the public? Come on up, we've been waiting.
My name is David Botts, going from the sixth ward, 3005 East 18th. And this pump station is located near that corner of Marlowe and 18th. I'd like to address the pump station proposal and make a pitch for actually eliminating the pump station by extending the sewer line to Crestline. And the Public Works Department is concerned about disaster. And you know, some of the questions we might have are, do we really need this backup generator? And you know, the question is maybe, however, over the past decades, we've never, we've never had a sewer backup related to a power outage, actually. We've, we've had one sewer backup, I think, in 40 or 50 years related to mechanical failures of the pump, but not, not power outages. There's, there's kind of a reservoir there that gives you a time period. If the power goes out, you have some time and the city can bring down a portable pump if necessary, and it's not that expensive to set it up. It's an easy thing to do, but even though the, you know, it's not a good situation. And I, I think if there's a way to eliminate this, I think we should look at it rather than spending the money on this Band-Aid that is questionable and you know, as to how much actual protection it would provide. And I think there's always going to be a risk of sewer backup, but the best solution would be to construct a gravity-based sewer line. And you could run this from Marlowe and 18th down to Crestline and I believe, I'm not sure, but the cost is, is under a million dollars, 850,000 perhaps, in that range. And you know, the question is, do you want to spend more money on, on Band-Aids and things that, you know, are going to require more expenses? And I think they're thinking of putting this generator on property, on, near somebody's property on a right-of-way, and we don't even know how much that property's... know how much that property's going to cost to purchase. So there's a lot of questions as to how much this, we don't even know how much this project is going to cost. And Davenport Public Works has stated anywhere from $128,000 to $300,000. So, I mean, this, it's not, it's not an amount that we know. We don't know how much property. And even if you spend that money, there's still going to be maintenance for repairs. There's still going to be portable pumps. There's going to be a lot of expenses related to this pump station that you could totally eliminate and make everybody happy and not have to put a loud generator on a, on a nice residential street. I think the Sixth Ward deserves a sewer line and, and we shouldn't have to depend on, on a 50-year-old or more pump station that fails quite frequently. So I'd like to ask and request that the city council consider this initiative to build the gravity based line. It's a big initiative, but I think in the long run, it'll save money and it will make the city more attractive. It will enhance property values. It will do a lot of good for this neighborhood and it is a fine neighborhood. It is a neighborhood that people like to visit and I don't think we should mar it up. And thank you very much.
All right. Thanks. Yeah, the neighbors have made some good points and this has been being discussed for a long time. And I don't know, Nicole or Brian, who wants to tackle this? So we all want gravity. Nicole?
Nicole Gleason, Public Works. If we get too far into the engineering weeds, Brian's going to come rescue me. So basically, the reason we are here right now is it's a two-part thing. It's raising the control panel for the safety of the operators and then also, as Mr. Botzko mentioned, adding in the generator. We believe this, this project will cost around $150,000. The property is actually already city right of way as far as I, my understanding goes. So that should be the complete cost. The reason we don't have the gravity sewer in our budget currently is because, as you all know, we are under a DNR consent order and those sewer funds are being spent on those priorities. Ron Hocker, our sewers manager, is concerned. We did have a squirrel, I think, in, in this area that, that put power out for a bit. So if we ever had a combination of a large event with a power outage, there is a concern that there are around 80 residents on the sewer line and backups could occur. So we feel spending the 150 is proactive as we do not have that larger project budgeted at this time.
Yeah. And Nicole, we are trying to avoid a disaster and I've seen disasters from sewer backups. The gravity down the road.
Again, that's all going to come into priority with our other DNR consent order items and I could not give you a, a point right now of when that would be prioritized. It's not in our five-year plan.
The neighbors have attended meetings as the number, the cost and addressed to the neighbors. I hear a million dollars.
Eight, eight fifty to nine hundred is our preliminary estimate without having the engineering work done.
And keeping the impact of this upgrade to the neighborhood is extremely important. And I know, I believe this is the famous Sixth Ward. And I know the Sixth Ward gets everything and we're trying to get that million dollars for your gravity sewer.
So Alderman Kuhl did have several neighborhood meetings on this. The original location that Public Works did want this, we were, we did reach a compromise with the neighbors to move it to a more discreet location. It isn't the, the first choice of the neighborhoods, but we did make a compromise there at a little bit of a higher cost.
And I know Ron had been working hard on that too. So, you know, we're, we're going to work on finding the funding for the sewer, but, you know, our number one priority is protecting the neighbors. So you made some incredible points and they're all well taken and, you know, staff is on board with you along with the council. Anybody from council? Alderman Kuhl.
Well, Councilman Ambrose, I mean, you, you gave the whole Sixth Ward line here. There's not much left to say.
I'm learning.
Except that we don't always get what we want. We, we don't. But if we try real hard, we get what we need. Thank you, Mick Jagger. I want to thank the folks from my neighbors from Sixth Ward for speaking up about this issue. We have had a couple of neighborhood meetings discussing the details of this and, and I really think that, again, we've gone through this process of listening and, and having the Public Works folks come out and talk. And I think we're moving towards a resolution. I think long-term, we do want to look at something that is cost efficient so we don't have these ongoing costs. But at the present time, I think as, as Nicole has pointed out, priorities as they are with the DNR come first. But I do appreciate your advocacy and we are a long ways from where we started out. So the glass is certainly for me half-full in this case. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Good job. Yeah, when we talk about the DNR, we got $200 million of demands upon the city from Department of Natural Resources on our sewers. So, and we've been working on that for 20-plus years. JJ?
I'm sorry I missed you. Nicole, feel free to shout at me from there because I simply... How, do you know how many similar pump stations we have throughout the city?
We got one. Right at seven sanitary sewer pump stations as well as a couple storm.
Okay. That was just giving me some perspective as to if we were to try to start replacing them, how tall of a task that would be. And I'm sure each of them have their own unique challenges if we wanted to get rid of them. But again, just giving me some perspective.
Just to throw in a point of clarification, we have just a couple of years ago replaced the pumps in this pump station as well. So now we're down to control wiring and such.
And this might be a question for the police chief, but what are we doing about those squirrels?
Bang. Thanks, JJ. Alderman Gribb.
Thank you, Chair. My, my question, and I haven't dealt with a lot of these, these pump stations in my three years. So I've been doing a lot of reading this week and trying to, to get up to speed with it. So my, my question is more based on the maintenance costs of the pressurized versus the gravity. You don't have to give me the answer now, but I know there's maintenance costs for both. And then maybe, Brian, at some point, you can sit down and, and talk with me about when we, when we, what our strategy is for using one versus the other. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Alderman Gribb. Number eight is resolution approving the three-year contract with City Bus Management Services versus Transit. Anybody from the public? City Number 10 is a motion approving the contract for the resurfacing of Johnson Avenue to Gammon to South Stark to Tri-City Blacktop Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa in the amount of $78,489.30. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number nine is a motion approving the contract for the upgrades of the semen controls for the HVAC system at Public Works in the amount not to exceed $58,549.34. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Alderman Dunn, please set the agenda.
With item number three being voted on later in the agenda, I would move to place item number seven on discussion and the remaining on consent.
All in favor? Oh, we got a second?
I got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Dunn. Our last area to be discussed is finance and Alderman Tompkins will lead that discussion. Alderman McGinnis will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to run through finance. We have eight items. Opening with number one is a resolution adopting an updated investment policy. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Number two is a motion authorizing payment to by state regional commission for fiscal year 2019 member dues in the amount of $57,042. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move forward. Number three is a motion authorizing payment to Quad Cities Convention and Visitors Bureau for fiscal year 2019 tourism marketing services in the amount of $375,000. I'd like to provide some background a little bit and then make a motion to amend this item. So this, this piece, what we, what the council is trying to do when working with partners throughout the community, where we are purchasing services to provide a contract. So this is something that is in the works and it's not quite there yet. So I'd like to make a motion to provide payment for the first six months and then with hopes that a contract will be in place for the second portion of the payment. The motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number four is a motion awarding a contract for repairs to fire truck T-3 to Legacy Fire Apparatus of Shorewood, Illinois in an amount not to exceed $55,000. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Number five is a motion awarding a contract to purchase and install a playground at Peterson Park to ABC Creative of Grimes, Iowa in the amount of $60,000. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kind of surface is going to be in the playground? Will it be wood chips again or will it be something a little more safer?
Parks and Recreation Director Chad Dyson, Alderman Ambrose, it will be wood chips again. We don't have in, in the budget to currently do a rubberized surface on this project.
Okay, I'll break it to the kids, okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Gribb.
Chad, if you would come back up. Sorry about that. I should have said something. But I'm just curious on how the, the technique of using the Survey Monkey with neighbor, neighbors and users is going. Are we still getting good use of that and is it, is it driving our decision-making when we pick these play structures?
Sure. We had mixed success with this round as far as just a response ratio. The Credit Island, which is the next agenda item, playground, received a lot of responses. The Peterson Playground, we only had a handful of comments, but they were good comments, good feedback generally about the park, not necessarily about the playground choices. But it's a good tool. Public engagement will continue to use it.
Thank you.
Anyone else, else from council wish to comment on this item? Great, thank you. Number six is another playground, motion awarding a contract to purchase and install a new playground at Credit Island Park to outdoor recreation products of Ames, Iowa in the amount of $84,905. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Alderman Dunn.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we're getting the same surface as Peterson Park.
Thank you. It's exciting to see some new playgrounds come into town. Number seven is a motion awarding a contract for the IT Office Remodeling Project to Piget Incorporated of Davenport for a not to exceed amount of $77,382. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move forward. And number eight is a motion directing staff to implement a 2018 voluntary employee early separation program and authorizing the terms of agreement. If we can have staff, please come up and just briefly explain what's going on. Thank you.
Brandon Wright, Chief Financial Officer and Assistant City Administrator. Really, the need for this really comes from our preparing and planning for our fiscal year 2020 budget. I can't believe we're already talking about 2020. But as we look forward to that year, what we're looking at is that, you know, in any year, the expenses will go up by so much predominantly by increases in employee costs that the city has and then what our matching revenue is to pay for that. As the commercial property values came in a little bit softer than we were anticipating for the year, meaning that we're coming into a budget in which we know there's going to be a gap between our expenses and our revenues as we prepare for 2020. When it's this early in the process, one of the things that we can do is kind of a thoughtful and deliberative attempt to start the budget planning process early is we can begin to think about, okay, you know, knowing that that issue is coming up for the 2020 budget, what can we do now to prepare for that? And so we do a lot of things like reviewing all personnel requests to hire, determining whether or not they're needed for the moment or not. As we do that, one of the things that we talked about as being a, a good planning tool for that was the implementation of this voluntary early separation agreement. And I'll just kind of go through quickly through the conditions of that. What we're looking for is for employees who are, who are, who are considering leaving the, the city in the near-term basis, from the basically be able to raise their hand and say, I'll take this deal. We'll leave the, I'm planning on leaving the city early. I'll take a little bit of a financial incentive to do so. And us knowing earlier allows us to do better budget planning for that as we look at the positions, determine whether and how we're going to fill those positions, whether we fill positions behind it and as we, as we prepare and as we plan for that. So the conditions of that early separation agreement are that an employee, it's eligible for all employees who have been here for at least seven years. And if, and it would begin on September 18th and they'd have to sign an agreement with us prior to October 19th to separate employment with the city prior to December 31st of this year. As the, as the incentive to the employee, they can choose one of three options. The first one is to have continuation of their health insurance for six months. The second item was that they could receive just a $7,000 cash payment on their, upon their separation. And the third item would be a $7,000 payment that instead of being a cash payment would go into their retiree health savings plan, which is, there are some tax incentives for them to do that and also helps them prepare for retirement, retirement costs, particularly in the area of health insurance. So those three options are the ones for the employees if they're interested in taking part of that. But again, really the, the important part here, what we're trying to achieve is early budget planning to help us prepare for our fiscal year 2020 shortfall that we know we're going to be having. And it's going to be in the neighborhood of about $500,000 to a million dollars. And really, most of it depends on the state's action as it comes to how much of the backfill, as you remember, when, when the commercial values, when they rolled back 10% of the commercial property values, the state provides that 10% backfill during that. As the state considers taking away that backfill, we need to look at our, at our opportunities to be able to, to reduce costs where we can so that we can adjust for those and to prepare for it. So that's kind of the, the heart of what we're getting at there is trying to prepare for that backfill in a thoughtful and, and planned out event.
Thank you. And hold on, I've got a couple of Aldermen who have some questions. Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Madam Chair. First off, Brandon, I want to thank you for your fiscal leadership. Some of us with this on the agenda were concerned about you coming back from your vacation, but glad to see you here tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Mattson?
Okay, I was waiting for more. I was thinking that was at the comment. No, I hit my head. So, okay, back. So Brandon, is it fair to say, we've talked in budget work sessions and others, the concerns of the state and taking away revenue from cities and tax breaks, et cetera. And we've talked about it a lot and you've warned us and your outward thinking ahead has put in some policies, but it is now coming to fruition and we are starting to feel the actions of what's been going on. Is that a piece of what is fair to say?
Absolutely. Because a lot of that backfill, again, a portion of it sits in different funds, but the general fund receives the lion's share of the amount that we receive in the backfill and that's what funds our essential services. As that goes down, we need to consider different ways.
Right. So, so cities have to react to the, these things that are happening. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I may, one other question. Brandon, the actual, what we're really talking about, some of the tax-related monies, we're talking about the lack of the backfill money, that's a big contributor to this issue as opposed to, again, I think, want to compliment you in the fact is our fiscal accountability has been very solid. So we've been living within our means, but when our means get pulled back potentially by some of these issues, we're just ready to, to be nimble and be able to react effectively. Am I on track with that?
Correct. Yeah, it's really a combination of two things. That's the reduction of that, the planned reduction of that black, of that backfill in addition to kind of, as I mentioned in the beginning, the softer commercial property values that we're experiencing. Those two things combined kind of lead us into a year where we need to be a little bit more, prepare a little bit more for our 2020 budget planning.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate your proactive approach. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Okay. Alderman McGinnis, will you please set the agenda?
I make a motion that all items be put on the consent agenda, including the amended number three item.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. And then in addition, there's just a list of purchases that are just there for your informational purposes only. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins and Alderman McGinnis. We have some other ordinances, resolutions and motions this evening. First of all, a motion for suspension of the rules to add one, to add and vote on the following item. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Let's see. Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes. Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gribb?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kuhl?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
The rules are now suspended. We have a resolution approving the contract for the construction of Jersey Ridge Road at Cromwell Circle and 65th Street Center Turn Lane Project to NJ Miller Incorporated of Bettendorf in the amount of $441,449.75. Is there any public with business, I mean, any comments from the public at this point? Alderman? Seeing none, will Alderman move the resolution? It's moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gribb?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kuhl?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have one other item. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. As I said at the beginning, um, in lieu of some information that was provided to us today concerning the civil rights, uh, previous resolution that was tabled, um, I'm requesting, and if Mayor asks for a little leeway, if I may, I'm asking if we'd be available to have a work session on Monday here, um, in the evening or whatever convenient for folks, uh, concerning these issues that have come up. I'd rather have, I'd ask that we all talk about it and we open it in the public realm, uh, before it gets to the agenda, because I think there's some serious issues. And I know everybody has the concern that they want to try and work with the Civil Rights Commission and do the right thing. So I'd ask for an open public discussion about these things that come up. So unless, um, anybody's yelling at me to say no, I'd, I'd ask for that work session on Monday at, what's six? Six, five, six? Anybody have a problem with six?
Well, I, again...
So I'm asking, no? Monday. Monday. Okay, so I'll ask for that.
There's a commitment definitely to do, uh, some event on Monday, is that correct?
In the evening? Okay, okay, and we'll work out of time.
Though I think the way the procedure typically works, if we are, that, uh, uh, something comes from the floor like this, are we in agreement? Is there others that are willing to move forward?
Your Honor, you could ask for a work session by yourself. So this is perfectly fine. You, you all want a work session Monday in the evening. Uh, staff will work to, uh, pick the optimal.
Thank you.
Time.
That's great.
That'll be wonderful. Please let everybody know as early as you can.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mike, will this be with our commission members?
Uh, this will be open to, I want this open to the public and I would encourage the commissioners to please come and, uh, so we can engage with them and talk with everyone, please.
And the timeline on this is because of...
Because there's a, there's a request to put something on the agenda. And I wanted this discussed and, and looked at before it goes to the agenda. So everybody has the ability to see this before we put this on and nobody has the time to, to understand it and talk about it.
Well, I don't think it is, I don't see a big hurry to put this on the agenda in the first place, but I think we...
In respecting the rights of my colleagues, that we do have our rules and two Aldermen have asked for this. I, I don't...
I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that.
So until today, I wasn't either, but they have. And Tom has sent out something, so, uh, he's doing what the council's asked. But I, I, I'm not okay with this going without this being public and, and being known and being talked about.
All right, I'm with you.
Thank you for my colleagues being agreeable to a discussion about this.
Yeah, and I would think all the, as I've talked to most of you, I think everyone is focused on, um, making sure we improve communication with the Civil Rights Commission and develop a long-term positive solution. Uh, so I think this moves us in that direction, gives us everybody a chance to participate. Typically in our work sessions, um, you know, we have a discussion and people definitely can listen in. I know we're all committed to have an ongoing dialogue. So, uh, with that, I'll work with staff, um, as we've talked about, to set up a time for us to meet on Monday, okay? Great, are there any, with that, uh, any public with business?
Andrew Kiefert, Fourth Ward. It's nice to see that a work session has been developed for this issue of the agenda item that is seemingly wanting to dismantle the independence of our Civil Rights Commission. You guys have a very tentative and fragile trust going on with community leadership right now. So you guys need to make this public and you guys need to have the community's best interest at heart. So it's nice to see that there's some progress on this. The Civil Rights Commission had a meeting last week at the Davenport Public Library and I only saw a couple council members there to take in information as to what the commission does. And with the agenda item set as it is, with the conditions that it's presenting, it's pretty ignorant in what it's trying to do. So I'm just glad to see that working and moving forward. I ask that you keep this open to the public and possibly even allow the public to have representation as far as commenting and having their concerns heard during this work session and/or any further meetings. That agenda item is still there. It is still being held over our heads. So there is a pressure amongst the community that the council might not be in their favor. So in order to keep this trust going, you need to maintain a public appearance, you know, allowing the public in and having a say. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I have a concern with, um, merging the city, um, civil rights and the commission because I have not had due process when I've dealt with the city.
Excuse me, can you give your name and, um, ward for the record, please?
Certainly, my name is Teresa Zablodil and I'm with, um, the Third Ward or Fourth Ward, sorry, Alderman Ambrose. And, um, I have a concern because I had tried to meet with the Civil Rights Commission regarding, um, public accommodation. And, um, I was not allowed to, um, have a meeting because, um, for whatever reason, when, um, I certainly met the criteria. And I know for a fact that, um, on February 15th, there was a hearing with, um, Jerry Bierman with the Civil Rights Commission and John Powell was in there, was in effect there. And one issue with me was Chuck had, um, bus driver had bypassed me. And he, um, he was, um, he just bypassed me for no reason while I'm going to, um, you know, have my injury looked at. And there is something I want to play with the city attorney, if I may, if you have time. And it was where the city attorney was, or it was one of the people with the city. Let me find that date here. Because I was a one-party consent state, you can record someone. And I don't feel like I've got really good, um, feedback from the city as well. And here it is.
Our administrative policies are, yeah. Yeah, but, um...
Excuse me, ma'am, is that, uh, is that information related to this, in a meeting with the city attorney?
Correct.
I, I would, I would recommend potentially, maybe we can get together, have you get together with the city attorney and go through that information. I know we're all interested in hearing that and it might be more effective if you, uh, meet with them and then they can give us a feedback.
Thank you, Mayor. I have met with them and they said for public accommodation that they don't have to give me advance notice. So they banned me from the bus without prior accommodation. And this lady is trying to tell me that, um, if she approved, even if I went for, um, the admin law lawyer, which I didn't have money at the time, that she would, um, not approve it. And that's not her choice to do that.
Seems like a lot of information that we probably need to review a little more detail. So, um, I would suggest it would be best start with, and maybe talk with our city attorney at his office and then get some information. You may want to follow up with our Civil Rights Commission.
No, I have met with them and they even have the tape of Chuck, the bus driver, bypassing me and saying he would make it a fifth time. And they have that at the Civil Rights, so that's why I'm speaking here now. Because it is not due process. I have not had the, the, you know... Yeah, Alderman Ambrose heard it as well and I can play the tape. He's nodding yes.
We will check, I think the most important, but we will, we will check both with, uh, both our city attorney and with the Civil Rights Commission to find out more details related to make sure your due process is taken.
That's why I'm having a public hearing to have my voice heard because they have not met me proper, they have not given me due process. They have not done what they should have done. They have not done their fiduciary responsibility and they have not given me proper notification. Here.
And we, again, I, since your time is out on this particular time, but I think we've heard, we've heard your concerns. I know we'll want to check on that. I will check with the...
That's why I'm concerned about separation of, um, state and civil matters.
Thank you for...
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yep, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak at this time? Are, are there any other reports from city officials? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Second, moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.